I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting for May tenth. Please stand for invocation and prayer. Excuse me, would you call the roll please to make sure we're here first before we pray?
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Ceraci?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Now let's stand for the invocation and pledge led by Mr. Ceraci.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving, but for the betterment of our community, so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is being through this thing.
Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes from the February twenty-fourth meeting? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as submitted. Mayor, do we have any awards or presentations this evening?
Not this evening.
Thank you. Shannon, do we have anybody for audience participation?
Not this evening.
Okay. Then let's start with council and committee reports. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening. Truthfully, I really don't have a report tonight. My committees have not met. So, but I do want to make mention of one thing, a quick congratulations, and I know the mayor wants to. She's gonna give details of the award, but Twinsburg was awarded one of the best cities for young families in Ohio. We ranked out, I believe it was like one hundred and eighty-four communities, number fourteen. So, congratulations to all of our residents, all of our staff, and everybody up here for making the city of Twinsburg one of Ohio's best cities for young families. And again, I know the mayor's gonna go into detail, so that's all I wanted to say about that. And with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you. Mr. Yates?
Yes, I attended the Parks and Rec meeting. And the last one, there was a lot of discussion between the members. It was, everyone was there. A lot of the topics that we discussed, we mainly focused on a new playground that's going in at Glen Meadow Park. There was designs that were presented, there was a lot of discussion on those, and I think we ultimately picked one that evening. I had made a request that since we were redoing the whole playground equipment earlier, that we look at putting in some special needs equipment there for kids and have some access to it. Since we are redoing that park, I just thought it would make sense to add that equipment. And it was, I guess, all of Parks and Rec was in favor of that. And Derek was able to get some pricing for that. I'm gonna, at the end of my report, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the budget for Parks and Rec to add that additional funding for that equipment. There was some discussion regarding issues at the fitness center. And TL gave a lot of updates on what was going on there in terms of the programming. And I think the fitness center is at its all-time high in terms of members at this point. But anyway, so anyway, it was a good meeting. I gave an update on what's going on with the clubhouse for the golf course. So, but it was a good meeting, and I'll do a motion in a minute. We also had a finance meeting yesterday. The meeting primarily focused on the salary ordinance. There was a motion made several weeks ago. We've been kinda focused on that. It was a motion I wasn't in favor of, and ultimately last night, that motion got withdrawn. So, I think tonight, I'm sure Mr. Ceraci's gonna give more of an update, but we'll be voting on passing the salary ordinance. Let's see, the fitness center birthday party was Saturday. It was a great event. I was there for a couple hours. It was well-attended by both members as well as residents just coming to check the place out. I think we signed up, you know, a bunch of new people. It was just a really well-run event. Created a lot of nice positive atmosphere at the fitness center. And then also, I went to the Twinsburg firefighters' reverse raffle. I think that was last Friday. Seems a long time ago, but it was reversed last, last Friday. It was a great event, it was a lot of fun. I got lucky enough to get in the final two on a sideboard, which won me back exactly all the money I spent on all the sideboards. So, it was a wonderful night for me and, you know. And then, okay, so for my motion. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget for Parks and Rec to provide an additional twelve thousand four hundred dollars to add special needs playground equipment for the Glen Meadow Park project. Is there a second? Mr. McDermott, seconds. Any discussion on that? Any questions? Would you call the roll?
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
Mr. McDermott?
I too attended the finance committee meeting, and I'm gonna defer to the committee president. He'll give a report on it, I'm sure, at the same time. That's all.
Okay. Last, yesterday's planning commission meeting was canceled. The next one is scheduled for the twenty-third, which is a Monday, at seven P.M. But from the meeting two weeks ago, there was a, the planning commission unanimously approved the preliminary plat for the Boulder Brook subdivision. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for council to approve the preliminary plat for the Boulder Brook subdivision. Is there a second? Mr. Scafidi, seconds. Is there any discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow at eight A.M. at the Twinsburg Public Library. Tomorrow evening, the Ethan's Green Homeowners Association will be having their annual meeting at Dodge Middle School at seven o'clock. If you live there, please feel free to join us. We had a discussion earlier about Parker Recs and a proposal to amend ordinance oh-one-two thousand and fifteen regarding, well, regarding the following. I'd like to make a motion that we amend ordinance zero-one-two thousand and fifteen to allow senior citizens the ability to use the fitness center between nine and two for a fee of thirteen dollars, under the same income level restrictions that the snowplow system or the driveway plowing agreements are. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Fury, that's thirteen dollars a month?
Thirteen dollars a month, yes, sir. And the reason that this was brought forward is some residents, a lot of the seniors take advantage of AARP's Supplemental Medicare Silver Sneakers Program where their supplemental Medicare covers the fitness center. It was approached by some people that use the VA as veterans for that supplemental care or that care in general. And, you know, this was a hardship to have that more than double on them. So, I think this is reasonable just to have, again, these restricted hours during the weekdays from nine to two. And I think it's reasonable.
The VA coverage doesn't allow them the Silver Sneakers?
It does not. The Silver Sneakers is a proprietary program for the AARP supplemental package. And that package has, AARP pays the city for their visits directly, not out of their pockets. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Well, thank you. And we'll follow this up with legislation just to amend this for Mr. Mason's suggestion in a few weeks. Also, in the caucus, we talked about a, and we've talked about for six months, a compensation committee of council. The charter allows council to create and/or delete boards or commissions and boards as we see fit for our own purposes. So, this time, I'd like to make a motion that we create a compensation committee so that we can examine in the future, and I don't wanna put an end on it, you know, fair compensation to the employees of Twinsburg as well as keeping a responsibility fiscally to the residents of Twinsburg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci, second. Is there any discussion?
No, so I just, well, I just wanna clarify. So, this is something that's gonna operate outside of finance?
Right, it's not going to be a finance committee. That way, the only topic that will be at these meetings is regarding compensation.
So, are we pulling that responsibility from finance, or is it gonna be recommending to finance?
I think that we'll have it recommend back to council because there's gonna be, we can't have seven members on it because that would stipulate a council meeting. We can have up to five council members on that meeting, and I will back out, so. I got that, talked with Dave about that, or Mr. Mason's prior to the meeting. Sure.
So, is that the intention then, to have five members?
It is.
How will they be appointed?
I will appoint them the way we appoint the other committees. And they'll be structured to this follow-up, they're just the idea to create it, so. Any other questions?
Is this something other communities have?
I did not check to see if other communities did, but to have this broken away and be the only topic of a meeting to get information and share information and research, I think is worthwhile. And it's what we talked about over the last several months. Instead of putting it in a finance meeting or committee hall that has other topics spread out, this would be concentrated on just this topic.
And these meetings would be open?
Yes, they're open to the public. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
All right, that's all I have tonight. Thank you. This evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Roden?
Thank you. The safety committee met last week. Mr. Ceraci will go over the details of our meeting in detail. The environmental commission will meet March twelfth, this coming Thursday, at seven P.M. here in council chambers. And then, the community relations board will meet on Thursday, March twenty-sixth, here again at six P.M. at City Hall. And that is all I have, but I do know that we're gonna be talking about a lot of stuff for the environmental commission. A lot of good things upcoming, so in two weeks, I'll have a good report to talk about what's gonna be happening with Earth Day and shredding and all that good stuff, so be looking for that. That's it. Thank you.
Speaking of shredding, do any of you get calls or emails regarding, asking if we offer that?
I have not.
No? Just curious, thank you.
Mr. Ceraci?
Hold on, then.
Oh, thank you. The finance committee, as was mentioned, met last evening, and we came to an agreement on the two thousand and fifteen salary ordinance. It was approved by the finance committee three to zero, and we'll be voting on it tonight as a council. And the recommendation, of course, from the finance committee was to pass it as submitted. The charter review oversight committee meets for the first time on March twenty-third at seven P.M. here at City Hall. So, that'll be our first meeting of that committee. It'll be mainly organizational, and we have asked the chair, Russ Sipin, who was the chair of the previous charter review oversight committee, to come in and just talk to the members about how they operated and why they, what they were, what they were about. And then, members will be sworn in by myself. And the safety committee met last Monday, March second, with engineer Amy Moore. And we discussed the sidewalk. We talked about a pedestrian safety program, which would be to install new sidewalks in different main thoroughfares throughout our city that do not presently have them. Not necessarily sidewalks, they might be bike lanes or some kind of a accessway where people can ride or jog or walk or whatever safely. So, we are having a resident meeting for the residents that this will affect next week, March eighteenth, here at City Hall at seven P.M. And we'll further discuss what the possibilities are and what we're looking at. As I said, engineer Amy Moore has some pretty good suggestions and some ideas. We got some input regarding safety from fire chief, regarding his thoughts on what we should do. So, we'll be making that presentation. Of course, it's open to the public, and that's next week, March eighteenth, at seven P.M. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes, the architectural review board met on March fifth. They had six items on their agenda. The, two of them were houses in the Corbett Farm Development, and they were approved as submitted. Lot fourteen and lot thirty was approved with some minor changes. And then, there were a few signs that were also, also approved as submitted. One for all-state insurance. Charter, charter, the charter bank is now Citizens Bank, so that was also approved. All of those signs were approved. A non-illuminated wall sign was approved, and another planter sign for CTC packaging was also approved. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mayor Prokop?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening, everybody. Just a few small reports, but I would like to start with a congratulations to all of us. Again, as Mr. Scafidi mentioned, ranking fourteen out of one hundred and sixty-two cities as one of the best cities for young families in Ohio. We're very proud of this recognition. They, this organization analyzed U.S. Census data to assess four key factors: home affordability, growth, and prosperity, education quality, and family friendliness. So, we rank right up there, and again, we're very, very proud of that. And so much of that is due to all the great amenities that we have in the city of Twinsburg. And we're happy that we were ranked so well in that report. Just a few things that I would like to mention here is, I don't know if you read this article, but they're talking about a five-state trail that would connect into the, our Summit County and northeast Ohio's tow path. And I just think this is an amazing project. I'm really excited about it. I know it'll take lots of years for it to ever happen. But as one of our residents mentioned a few weeks ago, there are some really amazing trails throughout our country. And one in particular that he talked about goes through Pennsylvania, through Virginia, it ends up in D.C. And this one here would be a system that would cover nearly sixteen hundred miles in Ohio and western Pennsylvania, northern West Virginia, western Maryland, and western New York. It would include eight key corridors connecting key cities, including Akron, Cleveland, Youngstown, Morgantown, Parkersburg, Erie, and Pittsburgh. So, again, it's a long-term goal. It'll take a long time till it happens, but it's a great economic development tool because people and families, like we just saw, and as I just mentioned, being Twinsburg being ranked fourteenth, people gravitate to those kinds of cities that have great amenities for their families and their residents. And this would be an amazing thing for this area of the country. So, I'm a fan, and I hope it goes through someday, and we're going to certainly try to do our part here in the city of Twinsburg. Couple events coming up. Earth Day is April twenty-second, and there will be a display that our environmental commission will be hosting. Daisy Walker's in the audience here today. Thank you, Daisy. And this will be at the Twinsburg Fitness Center. So, there'll be more information coming out on that. And the environmental commission's going to have lots of announcements coming up. They're doing some exciting projects this year. So, in the future, we'll have Daisy come up, and we'll have her give a report on some of the projects they're doing. But Earth Day is April twenty-second. Don't forget, that'll be at the Twinsburg Fitness Center. The senior center is busy, lots of programming coming up in the next couple months. They're going to have a casino trip in March to downtown Cleveland, the Horseshoe Casino. The Indians Home Opener Party in April. Chagrin Theater in April. The Hoffra House in April. May, the National Aviary Trip. And in June, the Cleveland Indians versus Detroit Ball Game. So, if you're a senior and you haven't checked out our senior center, it's a good time to do that because you can take advantage of all of these upcoming events, and they're at a very reasonable cost. So, again, call the fitness center and see what's going on and get involved here in the city. We have some programs that are taking place in the school, and I just wanted everybody to be aware of them because I think they're great programs. In fact, one is taking place this Thursday evening from seven to nine at RBC, and it's called Hidden in Plain Sight. Chief, maybe you're going to talk about it a little bit. So, again, it's for the parents of the students, not for the students, but for the parents. And it's very, very educational. This is the second time that the city of Twins, well, the school system is hosting this. Last time, it was at the high school. This time, it's at RB Chamberlain. Again, seven to nine, this Thursday. And I hear it's a real eye-opener for many parents. And again, the title is Hidden in Plain Sight. Obviously, you can imagine that it deals with drugs and other things that maybe children shouldn't be, that we know children shouldn't be messing with. Another great event coming up, this is a basketball game this Friday evening, the Dare Game. It's the school teachers versus our safety forces. So, Chief will give you some more information about that. I always get asked this question, so I'm just gonna throw it out there. The city has filled nine thousand eight hundred and forty-one potholes so far this year. And it's not just fill them for the first time, it's fill them and refill them and refill them because unfortunately, due to the freeze thaw that we have going on here in northeast Ohio, you fill them, they pop out, and you fill them again. So, nine thousand eight hundred and forty-one potholes. And the last thing I would like to mention, at the last council meeting, we congratulated Great Expectations, Great Expectations for a hundred and fifty grand championships. Well, last week, at the city of Solon, Great Expectations had a sweep. They received their one hundred and fifty-first grand championship. They ranked first place in every category. And then, on top of that, to make this really, just the icing on the cake, the Mood Swingers were champions, and also the RBC Singers. So, congratulations to all of that talent we have in our school system. Very proud of them, and wanted to make sure that we recognize them this evening. That's all I have in the way of reports, and would like to now hear our finance report from Karen House.
That was so exciting. Mine's just gonna be boring compared to that. My goodness. We have received our first advanced distribution for our local income tax. And as of today, we received one million three hundred and fifty-three thousand six ninety-two as compared to last year at one million five hundred and five thousand eight seventy-four. That reflects a ten percent decrease, which equates to one hundred and fifty-two thousand one eighty-two. So, as you can see, we're starting into, heading towards close to the second quarter. But again, these are one-month distributions back into the current month. So, we'll be able to get a better picture, as I stated before, following in our second quarter as to how, with the quarter percent being rescinded, how our income tax is being as far as collection. If you update it, let's have all have the report.
Thank you, Karen. Chief Noga? I know I took some of your thumb.
Oh, no, not at all.
You can give some of the details to it. I didn't have.
Absolutely. Good evening. During the month of February, the city of Twinsburg Communication Center generated two thousand and ninety-six calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the reminder vote Police and Fire Departments. The total call count for the year is four thousand four hundred and thirty-one. Twinsburg police officers arrested and/or cited one hundred and twenty-eight suspects into court on one hundred and eighty-three different counts. Officers issued one hundred and sixty-one written warnings and twenty-seven parking citations. Officers investigated fifty-six traffic crashes, of which five were injury crashes. Seventeen were on private property, and none were fatal. I received a letter late last week that I'd like to share with you. Dear Chief Noga, the National Association of Police Organizations is pleased to inform you that your nominee, Detective Alan Turnoski, was selected as an honorable mention for the prestigious Top Cops Award. The Top Cops were selected from hundreds of nominations by an independent awards committee. Officers from the top ten cases have been chosen as the two thousand and fifteen NAPO Top Cops. This year, there are thirty-one Top Cops representing the top ten cases. In each remaining state, one case has been selected from which an officer or a group of officers will receive honorable mention awards. This year, there are a total of forty officers representing nineteen states in the international and federal categories who will receive honorable mentions. Detective Turnoski is one of these outstanding officers. Last fall, while off duty, Officer Turnoski apprehended a burglary suspect from a burglary in progress, and it's why I nominated him for this. So, he and I will be traveling to Washington, D.C. during Police Week this year. So, on May twelfth, he will be receiving his award. We've never had anyone receive any level of the Top Cop Award, so this is a first for us. I'm very proud of him, and we will be bringing him to council next meeting or the meeting after so that we can recognize him for his, for his award. Finally, the mayor did mention the Safety Forces versus Teachers basketball game. In the past, it's been the police versus the teachers. We realized that we could use some assistance, so we broadened our horizons, and we're bringing the fire department in. I'm announcing the end of my nine-year self-imposed basketball, amateur basketball career retirement. I will be taking the court, and we know that I have a hard time dribbling and passing the ball is a little difficult, and I'm the king of the airballs, but I got two elbows that are really good at blocking people out. The other reason I'm, I'm coming out of my self-imposed retirement is that when I found out Chief Morgan is going to play, I just, I knew I'd never hear the end of it if I wasn't on the court. So, I'm dusting off my Chuck Taylors, and you will see me out there running around on Friday. Game's time, tip-off is at seven-thirty. As always, there will be giveaways at halftime. We hope you come out and support us. It's always for a good cause. We always have a lot of fun. So, hope to see you there.
So, your intention is to elbow the teachers or the firemen? I'm never sure.
You know what? Come out on Friday.
Okay.
And find out. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Morgan?
Good evening. For the month of February, the fire department responded to two hundred and three calls for service. For the year, that brings us up to four hundred and forty-one. That's on a pace that's eighteen percent ahead of last year's pace. There were no notable events. They were mostly run-of-the-mill. Fire prevention completed a hundred and fourteen inspections. Currently, there's twenty-six that are past due. And that takes into account one hundred and eighty-eight sites that we inspect every year. We opened three fire investigations through the course of the month, and were able to close all three of those investigations. We had fifty-nine different training events for a total of two hundred and twenty-one hours of training. And then, under points of interest, started this last month, and I'll continue the trend, weather warning sirens, they were tested March seventh. All of the sirens sounded, and there were two that had some made, minor deficiencies in their operation that are being addressed by Service Department. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Chief. Derek?
Good evening again. I want to mention what Mr. Yates said about the birthday party at the fitness center. It's our first time doing something like that. I think it went over really well. It was nice to see members and non-members coming together, checking out the facility, some good giveaways, some good sponsors that participate in the event. So, that might become something we do yearly. You know, membership drive and membership appreciation at the same time. So, it worked out, it worked out nice.
That was sixteen years, Derek?
Yeah, we're sixteen, sixteen years. And I think the updates, you haven't been there recently, check it out with the lobbies. Lobby's different. We have a new logo that we're going with, new painting in the fieldhouse, a couple new pieces of equipment already out there, and some more things to come. So, take a look. It looks, it looks great.
Looks great.
Especially for being sixteen years old. Camp's coming up, so we have all the camp information will be on the website this week. So, if you have kids in camp, you can get that information with registration April eighteenth at the community center. With camps, we also have a lot of staff coming on board, so any applications need to be in like yesterday as soon as possible. We're finalizing that. You can go on the city's website. We have Rock the Park planning we're doing. We have the events coming up, the Adult Easter Egg Hunt on the twentieth of this month, and then our Easter activities that we do on April fourth. They're all coming up. Pool passes are on sale, so if you get them during the March of, the month of March, you get five bonus days. Pretty much like a punch pass you can use for guests or, you know, anyone else who want to come. So, it's time to purchase those. We have our new USA swim team starting, doing it in-house now. our new US, USA swim team starting, using, doing it in-house now. That starts, I think, in a few weeks here. So you can sign up for swimming year-round now and have Coach Curtis as the coach of that. And I wasn't here after Shrek finalized, so I just want to congratulate the cast of Shrek and the directors. And a lot of volunteer hours go into that. It's a huge production, lots of people. And it really helps, you know, me and my department make that a successful event because we couldn't do it all by ourselves. So I wanted to thank that. And I did want to mention too, an article in the paper about, you know, the number of employees at the Fitness Center. It's a little unclear and I, and I want to put it out there. If you're unclear, call. I see a lot of stuff that goes around that I just shake my head about. But it's, you know, it's, if it's unclear, give a call. I'm more than happy to answer you. It says we have a ton of employees at the Fitness Center. Of those, there are nine full-time employees. We have some part-time employees, probably if you include the lifeguards at the indoor pool, 25 or so. And then most of that is seasonal staff. We combined aquatics departments last couple of budgets ago. So anything at the outdoor pool is included on the Fitness Center salaries and staffing numbers. So any lifeguard that we hire in the seasonal outdoor, another 60 to 70 lifeguards, those are included in that figure as well. Plus just regular seasonal guards we hire at the indoor pool. So, you know, it's nine full-time employees, a couple dozen part-time, then the majority is, is seasonal. And then a lot of those, they're also independent contractors there. So it might look like that aren't even state employees.
And that wasn't bulletin reporting. That was a letter to the editor.
Letter, that's what I meant, letter to the editor. So yeah, and that's why residents more than happy to call and answer questions if something's unclear. I'd love to make things clear and see if there's an issue we can work out. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Derek, I came across the, that application for a grant for the aquatic safety. Did you have any?
Yeah, Brandon is actually here. He was aware of it and was looking into it. It's, it's not the most easiest thing to implement, but he, we are aware of it and are, and are looking into it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Jim, do you have anything this evening? Or, okay. I guess that's the end of our reports this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on our agenda is legislation. And we'll start with ordinance 127, 2015.
An ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating classifications of employees to be known as the 2015 Salary Ordinance and declaring an emergency?
Sure. I move that we put ordinance 127, 2014 on its third and final reading, declaring an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott seconds. Discussion on the emergency? The reason for an emergency on this piece of legislation is that we've been talking about it for probably three months now. And it is, it is the vehicle to pay non-union employees in the city. And it will allow the Finance Department to proceed quickly to get any increases handled tomorrow. Or as soon as possible. Hey, they're going to call you, not me. Are there any other questions on the emergency?
No. Do we need an emergency though? There's a third reading on this, right?
Yeah, but if you don't do an emergency, you still have to wait 30 days. So if you, I think, Dave?
That's fine.
That's true. So if you could do an emergency, I think we have it on there, correct?
It is.
We'd appreciate it.
Okay. Shannon, would you call the roll for the emergency, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes 7-0. Now I move, I make a motion that we adopt as an
emergency, ordinance 127, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Discussion. This is an annual salary ordinance that the city does every year, that was recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee. Again, this, this pertains to all non-union employees, part-time employees and seasonal employees and council. It basically increases the ranges by 3% over last year's salary ordinance. And it's pretty much it. Is there any other comments?
No, I'm just glad we're passing it.
Okay, anybody else? Shannon, would you call the roll on, on ordinance 127, 2014?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, sal, or ordinance 127, 2014 passes as number 7-0. I was, I forgot to mention that there's two department heads that aren't included in this. That's Chris Campbell and Dave Maestros. I talked to the mayor prior to the meeting and she's going to be forwarding new agreements for us to, you know, address them at our next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
No.
No?
He has to get an increase.
Okay. We're going to pass over Resolution 12, 2015, which is the Twins Day's legislation at this time. Next would be ordinance 19, 2015.
An ordinance amending section 1323.05 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg, increasing certain permit fees charged by the building department.
Okay. So this is the third reading. So I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 19, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Discussion on, on ordinance 19, 2015. Building, building permits and just standard fees for our building department are being slightly adjusted. This has been discussed again for, for three meetings and presented by Russ Rodick. So are there any further questions? Would you call the roll, please, Shannon?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 19, 2015 passes 7-0. Ordinance 22, 2015.
An ordinance amending chapter 725, Alarm Systems of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg.
I move we adopt ordinance 22, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. Discussion.
This, this came to us from Chief Noga through the Safety Committee and was recommended by the Safety Committee.
Okay. And this has to do with answering emergency calls from businesses and houses. So are there any further discussion on 2002, excuse me, 22, 2015? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 22, 2015 passes 7-0. Ordinance 24, 2015.
The annual appropriation ordinance for the year 2015, prepared by council from estimates submitted by the mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015.
It's on its second, that was his second reading. We'll address that at our next council meeting. Resolution 30, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering agreement with GPD Group for the traffic and transportation needs analysis.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 30, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Discussion. This is a, basically a, a traffic study to look at how we could improve our downtown area around the square and the access, ingress and egress around that. GDP is the company that we are going to go with, not GDP, GPD. And it's a cost of $147,000. Are there any further questions? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Resolution 30, 2015 passes 7-0. Ordinance 35, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Perspectus Architect LLC for services related to a new clubhouse for Glen Eagles Golf Course and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion, excuse me, I make a motion that we put ordinance 35, 2015 on its third and final reading and declared an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott, seconds. Discussion on the emergency? The reason for the emergency is that as we get final plans done and council approves in the near future, this will allow us to have the construction drawings and all the necessary architecture work done by Perspectus, who we already have a, a, a small contract with. But this is what we'll need to do to move forward in getting accurate bids and construction of the clubhouse. So is there any further comments on the emergency? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes 7-0. Now I'd like to adopt as an emergency, ordinance 35, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll, go ahead.
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. Discussion. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 35, 2015 passes 7-0. Ordinance 36, 2015.
An ordinance approving the re-codification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio.
That's his first reading. Ordinance 37, 2015.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Perrin Asphalt Company for the 2015 road improvement project and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to put ordinance 37, 2015 on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Discussion on the emergency. This is the award for our annual road program, which includes Hillsdale, Westwood, and Warren Parkway. We want to get the contract awarded as quick as possible so they could start work as soon as possible. Shannon, would you call the roll on the emergency, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Emergency passes 7-0. Now I'd like to adopt as an emergency, ordinance 37, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Discussion.
Just happy to get this going. It's a big road program this year. We have lots of roads on it as well as a lot of maintenance around City Hall. And it's, it's probably one of the more costly road programs we've had in a few years, but certainly we need to get this done.
Okay. The cost is a million and $27. It includes Hillsdale, Westwood, and Warren Parkway. Is there any discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Ordinance 37, 2015 passes 7-0 as an emergency. Ordinance 38, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Dispatchers Clerk.
That's its first reading. Ordinance 39, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter, enter into amendments to a contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Patrol Unit.
That's its first reading. Ordinance 40, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Sergeant's Unit.
And that's its first reading. Resolution 41, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the city's share of funding for the state Route 91 Improvement Project.
I move, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 41, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Is, discussion. So this is the, this is the post-road to Glenwood program. It authorizes $405,000 of the program. We got an additional grant from Ohio Public Works. And this is a multi-million dollar project that, that we only have to pay $405,000 out of the city. I mean, I know it's only, but it's, it's, and that's a significant amount of money, but it's not even near what we would have to do if we had to do this on our own. So Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Resolution 41, 2015 passes 7-0. Resolution 42, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Baker Vehicle Systems for the purchase of one Jacobson Fairway mower for use at Glen Eagles Golf Course.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 42, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Discussion. So we had a 1996 mower that we traded in and we got this for $49,000 for a fairway mower. With the additional grass that we've got to cut on the practice of the fairway, it was something that we needed to move forward with. Was unanimously approved by the Capital Improvements Board and the Finance Committee. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Resolution 42, 2015 passes 7-0. Resolution 43, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sentry Equipment for purchase of one ground master mower for use at Glen Eagles Golf Course.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 43, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. Discussion. Again, we traded in a 1996 mower to bring the cost of this ground master mower down to $30,600. Again, we're getting almost 20 years out of this, out of these vehicles, tools. Is there any other comments? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Resolution 43, 2015 passes 7-0. Resolution 44, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Deere and Company for purchase of one ProGator utility cart for use at Glen Eagles Golf Course.
I move that we adopt Resolution 44, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Discussion. Again, this is a, a gator that is a utility gator. It's one of the, looks like a mini pickup truck. We're trading in a 1996 version and this will, and with that trade-in, it'll bring the cost down to $26,000. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
All right, resolution 44, 2015 passes 7-0. And that is the end of our legislation this evening. Unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Mrs. Stoffer, can we start with you this evening?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the Twinsburg High School Wrestling Team. They've had, have three state qualifiers going down to Columbus this weekend. They ended up seventh in the district. And the girls' basketball team is playing in the Division One Regional tonight as we speak. They're probably done by now. And I just wanted to mention, it was talked about earlier, the Dare game coming up this Friday at the high school between the safety forces and the staff from the schools. And also, there'll be an induction into the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters Hall of Fame. And we have seven inductees going in during, in this class. And I would like to mention their name. John Curry, Jim DeCicco, Dan Grummet, Lauren Maser, Brian Miller, Ryan Salmon, and Brad Stover. So congratulations to those seven. So congratulations to those seven. And, um, stop by the game, uh, Friday night and it'll be a, a nice ceremony to see. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Uh, I just want to also congratulate Derek and the, um, Fitness Center. I was at the birthday party and it was actually a lot of fun. Um, some good T-shirts and, uh, and just always a good time there, so, uh, it was a, a, another great event, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. McDermott?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Yates?
Um, just, uh, a couple of things. Yeah, the Fitness Center was, was great. We served pizza and cake and then we sent them back in to work out again since now. But, uh, no, I have never, there was nothing further.